We thank you for your watchful eye. We ask that you would now guide and direct everything that is said or done here tonight. We ask it in Christ's name, amen.
Attention, position, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chief. Item number one, consider approval of agenda.
Don't move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two is consider approval of consent agenda.
Don't move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier.
I've got a question.
On Monday night, how did we come up with that night instead of a Saturday night for
the trick or treat?
Because that's Halloween.
That's Halloween.
Because it's the actual day, yes.
I've had a couple of people concerned about that, and so, yeah, but it's too late to get in there, I guess.
No.
I think we've always done it different. Boo on Bell is on Saturday, and I think we always do it the day of unless it's a Sunday or a Wednesday.
So it can promote Boo on Bell for Saturday.
And is that scheduled for Saturday before?
I believe it is.
Sounds good.
Okay, well, okay, all right.
Next to maybe I'll chime in a little bit earlier.
That's okay, that's okay. Any other, anything else to pull or anything to question? Okay, call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three, citizens' participation. Okay. Item four, mayor's proclamation, Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2011, and that's going to be presented by Commissioner Smith. Who's accepting it? All of y'all? Okay, come on, Stephen.
City Shawnee proclamation, Constitution Week, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2011 marks the 224th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America and by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord the official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Linda Peterson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Shawnee, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask all our citizens to reaffirm the ideals and the farmers and the framers, I'm sorry, and the constitutional, well, there were a few farmers there today. The framers of the Constitution had in 1787 protecting their freedoms and guaranteeing to us through the guardian of our liberties. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and seized the seal of Shawnee and affixed this 19th day of September in the year of our Lord, 2011.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Okay, item number five, presentation by Peggy Johnson, coordinator for the Continuum of Care subregion on the official homeless count that was taken in August 2011.
Hello?
Hello?
Again, my name is Peggy Johnson. I serve as the coordinator for our local continuum of care, and I just want to briefly explain what our local continuum of care does. We are part of a, we are a subregion of a larger continuum of care of the Northwest. The counties included in that are Cimarron, Texas, Beaver, Harper, Ellis, Woodward Woods, Alfalfa, Major, Custer, Blaine, Dewey, Seminole, Potawatomi, Lincoln, Logan, Canadian, King Fisher, and Oklahoma County, not including Oklahoma City. So we are the east subregion, and we consist of Seminole, Potawatomi, Lincoln, and Logan County, and we meet the second Tuesday of each month normally at OBU unless one of our agencies want to host. And we do the official point in time count for our continuum, and we do it twice a year. The HUD requires that you do an official count every odd year in January, but we do one every January and every August here in, with our subregion. So our last count was done August 22nd, 2011, and Potawatomi County is what I will include today. We counted 104 homeless, but please note, 23 of those were counted as street homeless and 81 were counted as sheltered homeless. That means they were already sheltered in programs in this community, Salvation Army, Project Safe, Family Promise, they shelter homeless families and, well, and we do homeless families at Family Promise, and then other programs shelter homeless individuals. I do want to briefly go over what the definition of homelessness is according to HUD. Now, please note, in our count, we count the couch homeless because we want to know that in our community. HUD does not allow you to count the couch homeless. Their definition is, well, let me go ahead and read it. It's an individual who lacks a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. So they consider someone who is couch homeless, living on someone's couch or sleeping on their floor in their home, isn't considered homeless, they have a fixed place to stay. But we consider them homeless, and also an individual who has a primary nighttime residence that is supervised publicly or privately, an operated shelter, an institution that provides a temporary residence for individuals intended to be institutionalized, or a public or private place not designated for or ordinarily used as a regular sleeping accommodation for human beings. So that's HUD's definition. So actually, the numbers we submit to HUD will be a little less than this since we count the couch homeless in our count.
How many is that?
I didn't differentiate that number. On our survey sheet, we asked the people that count to mark that. We put a little area where they can mark couch homeless, and a lot of them didn't mark the box at all, so we don't know. So...
And what was the number this time last year? Do you have that money chance?
Yes, I do. It would have been, in August or you want January?
Oh, about those if you have it.
Okay, I do. In January of 2011, we had in Potawatomi County, 127. Now, I didn't break that number down today, I just broke down the number from August. So again, that would have included sheltered and unsheltered, and the majority are sheltered. They're already in programs.
Okay.
And in August of 2010, we had 75. And again, the majority would have been sheltered, and there would have been a portion that would have been unsheltered. And now, how we do the count, we recruit and train OBU students that go out and actually do the street count for us on that date, and then the agencies that work with homelessness, we send them the survey sheets and ask them to fill those out and get those back to us. So that's how we do the counts for the people that are sheltered.
And how do you ensure that you don't double count somebody?
Well, we do the count like all at once. So we send, the OBU students go out on the streets all at once, and they mobilize into pairs and teams and everything. So we try not to duplicate. We ask that they put an initial or a first name so that we don't duplicate, and I'm sure there is some, but I don't think it's a lot. It's a very small percentage, if any, because we do it all at once.
Okay. Just questioning that if shelter, if you could get the names from two different entities that they might be staying with, you know, like maybe having their meals at the Salvation Army but couched somewhere else, or maybe they're on the street when you interviewed them, but maybe they are sheltered somewhere.
Okay. We did tell them they can ask. What we tried to do is get little bracelets for them to wear when they were counted, and then we would send them to a central location to get a little goody packet, but that seemed to not mobilize. I don't know why we had actually had a meeting about that, but it didn't happen.
Okay, okay.
So, but we do ask, you know, we tell them, ask them if they've been questioned, if they've had some questions asked of them today so that they would know whether or not they've been counted or not.
And what's the purpose for you sending these numbers to HUD?
This determines how much money our area gets for agencies that write for HUD money. So HUD has to identify homelessness in the areas that they give money to, and they determine how much money is going to go out. So if there's a high need, I mean, agencies that apply are going to get more money to provide more services. So the agencies in this community that write for HUD, this number is very important to them, and they want an accurate count for when they write for their HUD money.
And is there an entity that oversees the distribution of the money from HUD, or is every agency on their own?
No. Oklahoma Department of Commerce, they distribute out the money. Now, Community Action and local governments normally get that money, and small agencies that want to apply, they usually have to go to their local city government and ask them to sponsor that money for them, or go to their local Community Action Agency to ask them to sponsor the money for them. So...
And how do our numbers for Potawatomi County compare to the other numbers, let's say Seminole, Lincoln, Logan Counties, in relationship to even other counties within Oklahoma?
I don't know what that number would be. I service the coordinator for our subregion, which is just a small portion. I can't give you an overall number. They do distribute that out, but I didn't bring that today. I think our last count, and I'm just guessing, was about 250 across our whole continuum. So they're really interested in how we're doing our count because we are counting pretty good in Shawnee. And our local representative from El Reno, which is our host agency for our continuum, she comes to our meetings and she wants to know how we're mobilizing and how we're going out and getting our count, because we're one of the better counts.
And when you say better, do you mean lower counts?
No.
Quality-wise?
More accuracy, I think. They feel that we're getting more accuracy in the count, that we're reaching more people out there.
But you don't know how we relate to other counties as far as whether we're high for our population, low, right where we should be?
If other counties saw a 25% increase in their total numbers?
I don't know. I just think if anything, it's because we count better. I would think it is pretty level across the state for our size. It's just that we're more mobilized and more organized, and we have OBU, the students to go out and really help us. So we're at an advantage. We're just more thorough. I really don't think we have more. So...
What, may I ask, how, as a city, how can we, what can we do with this information to improve the situation for our citizens?
Well, as part of our continuum, we use this information locally to identify gaps in services, like are we providing enough homeless programs for veterans in our community? Where are they going? That's how we use the information. And people that sit at this table, this continuum group, they're local nonprofit agencies that work with homeless or at risk of homeless. So we've got, you know, Shawnee Public Schools is involved in our program, Project Safe, Family Promise, Salvation Army. So we're coming together to identify gaps in services from these numbers. Where are they finding the homeless populations? It can be used in a variety of ways, but one of the biggest aspects is identifying an actual number for HUD funding, because, you know, COCA, they write for HUD money, and of course, we want to make sure they get an ample amount of funds to provide services to people in this community. So they're very interested in this number. So...
And do these numbers include children?
Yes. I did get a breakdown just for our recent count. My paperwork reflects from the survey sheets, I got 15 families and 29 children. And now, the majority of those were sheltered homeless. They were already in programs. Now, the survey sheets I received, or agencies that are involved in our continuum in this community is the City of Shawnee, Urban Renewal Authority, we've got Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency, Family Promise of Shawnee, Project Safe, Shawnee Public Schools, Shawnee Rescue Mission, United Waya, Potawatomi County, Success by Six, Salvation Army, and Youth and Family Resource Center. So they're actually members of our continuum.
Fairly comprehensive.
Yes, yes. And, you know, we would like to get more involvement because there's other agencies that work with homeless or at risk of homeless. So we would like to get them at the table, again, to identify gaps in services so we can all work together and support each other, especially for agencies that want to go out and get HUD money and provide services in gaps. Okay?
Now, once you count them, I mean, you're actually visiting with these individuals?
Yeah, on the street count, yeah.
Or the OBU students?
Yeah, yeah, we train them and tell them how to go and approach, and we give them a survey sheet. It's like a checklist sheet. So they'll put an initial, and they'll put like any special disabilities, like mental illness or substance abuse or HIV or something, and they'll have a little checkbox. They'll ask if they're in a family unit, and then if they may have three children, they can put child one, child two, child three. So it's just a checklist sheet is all it is.
And then, do they say, here's a sheet of help that you could go and seek shelter? I mean, are we trying to guide and direct them in some way?
No, no. We did that a couple of years ago. We attempted to do that. So, no, it didn't happen this year. So...
If I was to ask those questions, I would, and don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to, I can't, we can't, we're not telling them how they could get help? I mean, can, are these people able to find that kind of information out on their own?
The street homeless?
Yeah, that's, yes. Those are the people I was considering.
Yeah, specifically for the street homeless. You know, some of the hubs in the community would be Salvation Army, and Shawnee Rescue Mission is where they could go to specifically seek services. Your housing authorities, they refer to us. I feel we have a pretty good networking system here in Shawnee. We all refer to each other quite well, and we all pretty well know who does what. Like, we, Family Promise only works with families with children, so we don't work with individual homeless. We would refer those people to Salvation Army. If Salvation Army got a family that they couldn't accommodate, they're going to refer to us, Family Promise of Shawnee. So we have a pretty good networking. But the street homeless, no, I, we do not give anything specifically to them to tell them where to go. I just assume they're going to the hubs, and I would say that's Shawnee Rescue Mission and Salvation Army.
If they were to ask during the survey, though, would the students have the information to be able to tell them or to guide them where to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. We work with their outreach coordinator, Dr. Joy Turner at OBU, and she participates, actually, I should have put her down on the list. They participate more so in the count, in mobilizing their students together for this count. So...
Okay.
Are there any more questions? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will you be giving us a report every six months?
I'd be glad to. I will be rotating off as the coordinator in January. I will have served two years, not that we have a limit, I just felt I've done two years, and someone else is going to step up and serve as coordinator, and Melissa McKay with Community Action will be doing that. So I'll relay that information to her and have her to connect with the city to provide those numbers.
I think it's helpful, I really do.
Okay, sure. And we'll have another count coming up at the end of January. So...
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you. Item number six, consider annexation request by North Rock Creek School for purposes of construction of new middle school and gymnasium and authorize staff to proceed with notice and hearing requirements.
I'd move without the annexation.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the annexation request by Commissioner Harrod.
I'll second that.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Smith. Do you have questions or discussion?
Looks like Justin's going to make a report.
I don't have to.
The motion, actually, if I may, needs to be to authorize staff to proceed with notice and hearing.
To proceed with notice?
That's what I said.
There you go.
Yeah, I thought so. I just wanted to make it clear for the record.
Okay, okay. Let's do that, and we can see what happens. Okay, I had just asked Justin for some maps so that I understood where their property currently was, too.
The other part of the school is already in the City of Shawnee, because we did some work out there, and we had to have a city permit and inspections and everything else. So, yeah, the other part of the school is already in the city limits.
Right, right. Any questions or discussion? Okay, call roll for that consideration of them to proceed with the notice and hearing requirements.
Harrod.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, consider acceptance of public improvements for the plat of Shawnee Transfer Station and place maintenance bond into effect.
Justin didn't have anything to say.
Was that a move?
Yep.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Stevens and seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Any questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Stevens.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number eight, consider contract with the IAFF Local 206 for fiscal year 2011, 2012.
I think this may be my presentation. The contract that is in your packet has been approved already by the local. It does not have very many changes, and they're all in conformance with discussions that we've previously had with you. This is a matter now of your approval of that. The first change is that the dates are cleaned up. The second is to remove the language that had suspended step increases so that step raises will be restored on the employee's anniversary date. There's a 3% across the board COLA. There is some language regarding incentive pay. In the old contract, they could receive incentive pay for courses taken at OSU Fire Service Training. Now, they can also get that same pay for the same class, but it can also, it can occur at Career Tech Fire Service and not just at OSU. And then there was another language cleanup on maximum accrual of holiday leave. It's kind of detailed, but it's really cleanup. The other change, and one that's pretty significant to the city, is trade time. There is a tradition in the fire service of one member of the union coming in and working for another, and you trade it back. Sometimes that kind of gets out of hand. We had no restrictions on it either in terms of the level, a firefighter could work for a captain, for example, or on time. This contract allows firefighters to serve only for firefighters. Lieutenants can work for a firefighter, or they can work a rank up. Captain can trade, you know, you can do one above and one below above that, and there's 120 hours of trade time. And that falls on the person who wants someone to work for him. One employee could work a lot extra, but you can only ask someone to work for 120 hours.
This says 240. Is it 240? Okay.
No, it's 120, I think. My summary says 120. What is that?
Article 11...
1101?
1101 says 240 on mine. Jimmy says it's 240.
It's 240, the summary's wrong.
Okay.
The staff recommends approval of the contract. It says we're 240, correct, Jimmy?
Okay. Okay.
Motion to approve.
All right, a motion to approve the contract by Commissioner Stevens.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier. Any other questions about the changes? Call roll, please.
Stevens.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item nine, acknowledge sales tax report received September 2011.
I think he's turning off. Sorry.
Understand.
Unfortunately, sales tax was down this past month. It was down actually about $60,000, or 4.2, 4.27% compared to last year. We collected $1,330,420, which is approximately down 2.4% compared to year-to-date budget. But I did look at the other revenues because that, sales tax was a little concerning. Some of our other revenues have become, exceeded the budget amount. So overall, for the first through September 15th, we're supposed to be about 25%, and we're right on the mark, or if not a little above. So we're doing okay. But it really, you know, the $60,000 down is a pretty big hit. It was...
For sales tax.
Yeah. But one example that has come high because of the hot, hot summer was the OG&E was quite high.
Fantastic.
Yeah. So, right now, overall, though, we're right about, right on target. So hopefully, the sales tax will come up in the next couple of months.
Do they send you a delinquent report every month, or you just get one periodically?
I have to go on.
Plan to get it.
And there's not a whole lot of them on there. I'm trying to look at ways to try to police it a little bit better, but right now, we don't even know what, exactly what businesses are in town, so we're just going to have to do random checks, which I plan to implement. Because I, I think the delinquent one was, maybe had 30, 40, tops? Not even that many, I don't think. It was just one page.
And give it money by your decision, or?
No, no. It just tells them what months they're late. And the people who are late are consistently late, because I went back like five months and it really didn't change. But we don't have a dollar amount or anything like that. So...
One of the things that we learned at Oklahoma Municipal League Annual Meeting this last week, the city manager and I went to a meeting that was just about dealing with Oklahoma Tax Commission, and they were there. I've not had a chance to go over it with Cindy yet. They're starting to get there. It's hard to get on their website, it's kind of hard to get some stuff generated, but there are going to be a lot better tools for all of that, and some mechanisms that we can use for an easier collection effort. And I just didn't get a chance to talk to her today about that, or give her the CD so she can read all that, so, look at that.
But we really need to start policing it, and basically, we're just going to have to go down the...
On the list.
And it's hard to find, when you have the list of who has paid sales tax, it's very hard to find because a lot of businesses may be running as ABC, but they're owned by XYZ, and so you have to go on the internet to find out who the owner, and then, you know. So, I mean, we're trying to start to police it, but I really want to try to figure out something, and hopefully, with the Oklahoma Tax Commission changing some things, it'll make it easier, because there's got to be people who are not paying.
So is that responsibility ours, basically, instead of the state's?
They just have one or two people. They used to have about 10 or 15 that go, if you're on a major highway and in a, in a major town, everybody come by it once a month to audit your taxes.
Part of the new agreement is to allow cities to have sufficient information to do some of its own enforcement, and...
Which means they have to... Which means they have to share some of that with us.
They're going to be sharing information with us.
Any other questions? Sorry, it wasn't better news.
Thank you very much. Item 10 is consider bids. A, refurbished screw pumps, contract number COS-SMA-12-01, open.
At least one.
It's not too blank. Throw it down this way.
We took bids to refurbish our second set of screw pumps at the Northside wastewater plant. The first one was from Rice Painting and Sand Blasting LLC, Plonka City, no bid. The second one was Urban Contractors Inc., Oklahoma City. Their total bid was $183,000, but then they bid an alternate on top of that of $3,500 each to rebuild upper bearings. They're the only ones that bid it that way. The third was JS Heron Company, Athens, Tennessee, $171,700. The last bid was Wind Construction Company Inc., Oklahoma City, $186,000. Staff would recommend that we defer to the next meeting and give us a chance to review that proposal.
So move. One question. Does this include installation or is that just for the?
All right, motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Herrod?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winteringer. Any other questions? Call roll please.
Herrod?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Here.
Stevens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries.
10B, Lake Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project, contract number COS-PW-11-03, award.
I wanted to, when I asked the commission to defer this item until the next meeting, this is the bid opening we had where it was about $180,000, $90,000 higher than what our estimate was. I asked the engineer to look at some items that they could maybe eliminate from the project. And he emailed me last week a list of items that could be eliminated from the project and not really address or interfere with any of the structural deficiencies we're trying to correct with the bridge deck. Those items total about $73,000. And he's saying the low bid would then be at $556,000. But what I'm needing to do is look at the items that he's recommending to delete from the project and put them back into the bid to make sure that the low bid is the low bidder. And also, if it is the, if it is still the same low bidder, then what we would have to do would be to award the contract in the full amount and then change order down to what he's recommending. And I want to touch base with the contractor also to make sure that he didn't hide any money in those bid items and he would be willing to, you know, to sign the change order more or less. So I'm asking to, this item to be deferred for two more weeks.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Stevens?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Winteringer? Call roll please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Herrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 10C, rehabilitate runway 17-35, grade safety and construction connecting taxiway, AIP, project 3-40-0088-015-2011, contract number COS-PW-11-01.
Well, the good news is.
Oh, no.
Yes?
As then, as of the end of last week, the FAA finally got all their numbers together and the grant application was signed by the mayor and sent to them and executed. And we have that in hand now. It was too late to get it here so that we could award the bid tonight. But that grant's done, the OAC grant is done as well. And we're ready at the next meeting. If you choose to defer, we will be ready to award the bid.
Okay. So, okay. Motion by Commissioner Stevens to defer it one more time.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Herrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 11, new business?
None.
What a good job you did. Item 12, administrative reports?
John Crowe.
I was asked by Brian to give just a quick update on our expo parking lot, kind of scheduling and stuff. If you remember, the commission authorized us to go ahead and proceed with design of the parking lot as was approved by the SCCDA and the city. We've been doing that, been drawing into AutoCAD the layout that had been approved and have been dimensioning the entire site. We've had the utility companies out there to locate the utilities and mark them in the field. We've had the marks and everything surveyed and that data input back into our drawings. Currently, we're working on the grading plan and getting the, setting the grades and elevation so that we have positive drainage throughout the entire site. Now, our schedule is such that we should be complete with the grading and the specification book and the contract documents and be able to come back to this body on October 17th and request authorization to advertise.
For the parking lot?
For the entire parking lot, right. And at that time, we can decide whether we want to do phase one, phase two, phase one and phase two. But it was a total of about 1.2, 1.25 million dollars for the entire shebang, so to speak. And the pre-bid will be November 8th if we're authorized to advertise. And we have the bid opening on the 21st of November. And with that, we'll have a, since we got kind of a, the scheduling is such there at the end of October and the first meeting in November, we couldn't make the 20-day advertising requirement. So that's why the bid opening will be on the 21st. But we'll go ahead and request at the next meeting, the first meeting in December, actually, when we have the bid opening, November 21st, that's where I'm getting that. We'll request to authorize to award of the project that night. Normally, we would wait two weeks and lose it two weeks. But if we can award it that night, contingent on all the math and the numerical numbers equating in the unit prices and the quantities, then we could have the pre-work in two weeks, December 5th, and speed things up. And from the meeting, at the pre-work meeting, December 5th, we could come out of that with maybe a notice to proceed effective somewhere December 12th or December 15th. And it's a 150-day contract, five months, because we're going through the winter and the holiday stuff. But with the 150-day contract, the ending completion date would be May 10th, 2011. That's the quickest we could do it.
Will you be done with your work before October 17th?
We will be done with the majority of it. We have advertised the project the 19th of October if we're authorized on the 17th.
But what I mean is, is part of the delay, you finishing up design, grading, utility work, all of those things?
We wouldn't be in position to advertise it until October 17th. If that's your question.
Yes, that's my question. If we have some special meetings and want to put that as a line item on there, you won't be ready until October 17th.
Won't help us if you have extra meetings. Unless you just, you know, tell us to work all night and stuff like that, I guess.
Okay.
But this is the quickest and the way the dates fall in the city commission meetings and stuff.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right.
That's it.
Is that all the administrative reports? City manager in charge? Okay, commissioners' comments?
John, on this bridge, is that going to be light up in the middle of winter when we're doing that thing? Or on the?
On the Lake Road Bridge?
Lake Road Bridge? Traffic problems and stuff?
We'll award it the next meeting. No, it, they can work through. And it's being bid out to keep one lane open at all times.
Okay.
And also bid out with portable traffic lights and seeing on some stretches of the road.
Anything else?
Yeah, I was thinking about, everybody probably read in the paper, and Carl Crusell talked to John and I Thursday night about a combination meeting with the expo board and the county commissioners. I just, we have a meeting on, what is that, the 26th?
Yes.
Is that possible to get that worked out or is it too late now or what's the situation?
No, it's not too late. I'd have, I have to amend the one that you just received.
But if it won't work out, then the next possible date is either our regular commission meeting on, what is that, the 3rd or something?
3rd.
How about the, or the 10th?
Or the 10th, yeah.
Yeah.
So can we work toward trying to do that on the 26th or is that possible?
It's possible. We'll have to get in touch with Nancy Bryce and see where they are from there in as far as.
County commissioners and so forth.
County commissioners.
County commissioners and.
Making sure our agendas are the same and, you know.
Okay.
I can call her in the morning and see what.
If we can't do it on the 26th, can we do it on the 10th then?
I'll find out.
Yeah, try to manage that.
You still want it at the expo at what time, 6:00?
Well, I don't care what it is, whatever you have, yeah.
I'll see if I can work that out tomorrow.
That's agreeable with other commissioners, huh?
I think that's on. Yeah, I was going to ask if you wanted to talk about adding that to the, to the agenda, so.
The other thing is that, as we, you know, we crossed the hurdle of delaying this election and everything, but I've been intending to email the city manager and attorney and everybody else. I mean, it's got to, somewhere or another, it's got to be some compromise on this thing or we're never going to get anywhere. I'm not for having a bunch of meetings if we're not, you know, if we're not for compromising because I don't want to waste my time and the community's time and stuff like that. So, you know, if we can work that out, fine, but if we, again, I mean, I don't, it's not any issue. Make never Monday night, I'm not going to be able to do that.
My idea for this first meeting was just mainly to talk about funding options. We talked about that before. What is, what's the mill? How much, you know, how much does it raise? How long can it go? Just so that as we move forward and try to put those packages together, we would understand how, how much we're comfortable with asking for for how long and really kind of get a handle on that. We've talked about it without the data. And I think we've probably throughout this entire process, we've all asked different questions. What about this millage for this long? What about this one? What about this project? What about the sequence of projects? What can be put in? So that, I think this is the one mainly about how to package the total without talking about what the individuals are. So that kind of gives you an idea of where that total could be.
Ms. Conner, are you going to be able to provide the information of what we can do and what we can't do?
We're, Mr. Clover and I are working on getting some data together. And I hope we're going to be able to run down all the pertinent facts. Every time we think we have it corralled, something else turns up. By next week, I would hope we have, have that together, about what we can combine and what we can do.
Just like the answer.
That was goal one, to solve that first.
Okay.
Well, back to that expo parking lot and RV and stuff like that, I'd hope that maybe we could come to some kind of an agreement too to do that we just pay off all our bonds in November on that one cent sales tax. I was hoping that we could be able to work out something to do, a small issue to take care of those two projects. So they've got to be done before the February election. And if you, what's the waiting period now before, if when it passes in February, then what's 120 days or 60 days or 120? I don't remember. I don't either.
It'll take a while.
Yeah.
Because you have to sell bonds, you have to, you have to get the transcript approved.
So you're talking about at least three months, so, you know, February, March, April. So it'd be May before you can do those projects and that's too late.
Right.
So I would encourage the commission to think about that and give it consideration.
And should that be an option? I think we need to talk about what our other projects might be. Should we package together a small bonding option? And it looks like we might need to talk about that, what the options are. What's our other meeting, October 10th maybe? So that would be before the 17th meeting of bringing the parking lot to us. So we kind of have some idea about how that might work. Because I certainly don't want to vote to start moving that forward and then it's not understand where the funding is going to be coming from. Right. Yeah, so a meeting with the expo board and the county commissioners on or before October 10th is going to be important also.
So are you saying two meetings?
No, just one, but whatever date works out.
Right. We had talked about having our alternate Mondays be meetings to discuss topics necessary for our capital improvement plan. And so, because it looks like funding options and then this meeting, this joint meeting has come up and it is kind of timely with the parking lot, topic that's becoming very timely now because we're trying to get some things done before the summertime. So it looks like the 26th and then the October 10th, we're going to have some topics for that one too.
We'll have the tax information from, you know, expo about what the money out there generates. And we sure don't want to lose a couple of RV shows if we're going to take a chance on losing the rodeo and stuff like that because we can't move forward.
And the sooner we can have those discussions, the better. Okay, anything else? Item 14, anyone?
I move adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Commissioner Herrod?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll please.
Whoops. Herrod?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we will call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority Meeting for September 19th, 2011. We have a quorum. Item one is consider approval of consent agenda. Motion to approve by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Herrod. I heard it. Yeah. All right, call roll please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Herrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two, new business?
None.
Item three, administrative reports?
None. Quite easy.
Most of you are so good at this job, I'm telling you. Motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Collier, seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll please.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Herrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I think we can all email the city manager and tell him how good a job Jim did. He might have been charged yet.
I'll call to order the Shawnee Airport Authority Meeting for September 9th, 2011. We have a quorum. Item one is consider approval of consent agenda.
I'll move.
Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Collier, seconded by Commissioner Herrod. Call roll please.
Collier?
Aye.
Herrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, new business?